Good evening. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming out. We do have a quorum.
Is it on or not?
Yay!
Yay! And didn't have to wait too long. I hereby call to order this special town meeting for the Town of Carlisle of October 7, 2019. My name is Wayne Davis. I am your town moderator. I've inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined that it has been properly served. I would note that the warrant, as posted, incorrectly stated that the date of the meeting was occurring on Tuesday rather than Monday, but did correctly state the date of October 7th. I have determined, based on advice received from Town Council and confirmed with the Attorney General's office, that the misstated day of the week is a minor error, a scrivener's error for those of you working on your vocabulary in legal parlance, and therefore not fatal to holding the meeting this evening. So I would just ask the town clerk to make note of this ruling for the record. I will assume the consent of the meeting to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there any objection? And let me just check in. We have some folks in the cafeteria. Is there any objection from the cafeteria to waiving the reading of the warrant?
No objection.
No objection, thank you. And at Benfield, is there any objection? Okay, I will explain that time delay. No objection from Benfield, thank you. I'll explain our technical situation in a moment. But more important than that, the fire exits. They are to your left at the front and rear of the auditorium. In the cafeteria, the fire exits are either to your left where you entered or to the right rear corner. I would ask that everyone in whatever room you're in, please turn off the ringer or chimes on your cellphones and other electronic devices. And I realize that I may not have done that myself, so I will do so. In a few moments, I will give a brief overview of our procedures for tonight, but at this time, I would like to ask each person on the stage to introduce him or herself. We'll start back here with the town clerk.
Mary D. Alderetti, Town Clerk.
Kate Reed, Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Arnie Arnold, Board of Selectmen.
Nathan Brown, Board of Selectmen.
Lucas Calillo, Board of Selectmen.
Alan Lewis, Vice Chair of Board of Selectmen.
Tim Goddard, Town Administrator.
Tom Harrington, Town Council.
Victor Liang, Chair, FinCom.
James Cataccio, FinCom.
Aaron Delia, FinCom.
Scott Triola, FinCom.
Jim Dar, FinCom.
Wilma Pinsky, FinCom.
Thank you. We have a bit more procedural housekeeping, so please bear with me. First, as you may know, we always set up in the cafeteria to provide both spillover capacity should we need it, as well as a place where parents can bring young children. To help with the procedures in that room, I have appointed Margaret Gladstone of 1005 Curve Street to serve as the Assistant Moderator and have sworn her to that position. So let me just check in with you. Peg, do you have anyone in the cafeteria at this point?
Yes, we do, Wayne.
Okay, great. Welcome. Second, in addition to the cafeteria, we have set up a telecommunications link to the conference room at Benfield Farms on South Street. I have appointed Maureen Deary of 575 South Street to serve as the Assistant Moderator and have sworn her to that position. Those in attendance at Benfield have been checked in by one of the appointed tellers and will be able to participate fully, as if they were physically here with us. For those of you who are in the room down at Benfield, just let Assistant Moderator Deary know if you wish to speak, and she will message me, and we will take it from The connection that we have to Benfield, we have a little bit of a delay, and so I would ask your patience. You saw that already when we checked in with them before. There may be a little bit of delay, but I would appreciate your indulgence on that. We are making a little bit of history here. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first time in Massachusetts that at a town meeting, it's been operated with a remote location that is outside of the building complex where the main meeting is being held. This is a pilot. We're doing it first and foremost to make it more accessible to our fellow citizens who live down there, some of whom have difficulty getting out in the evening, to give them an opportunity to participate. And also, it's a first experimental step towards possibly expanding opportunities for others to participate more fully in-town meeting. So I thank you for that. Let me just check in. Maureen, everything working fine with you down there? And if we could unmute them, please, John? Okay, go ahead.
We have 13 people.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, on to our next item here. If we have anyone attending the meeting who is not registered to vote here in Carlisle, I do ask that you please sit in the first three rows down to my left. And I see we have a number of people there already. If there are any other non-Carlisle voters in the room, I would ask that you please come and sit down front. Non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. Unless there is objection, I will assume the consent of the meeting to recognize the following to speak: non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces; non-voter employees of the Town of Carlisle; and Town Council. Any of these may speak with permission, limited to topics relevant to their official capacity with the town. Is there any objection to allowing these people to address the meeting? Seeing no objection here in the cafeteria, any objections?
No objection, Wayne.
No objections. And at Benfield, if we could just check in with you there, no objections. Maureen, you can just give us a thumbs up. I can see you on my screen. Okay, great. Thank you. We will learn how to do this efficiently. Okay. If there are any other non-voters with us tonight who do not fall into these categories, they may only speak upon further motion and consent of the meeting. We do have microphones, as you can see, as usual, numbered microphones in the aisles at the back. If you wish to speak, please move to the microphones in advance of requesting to speak. When I recognize you, please state your name and address. Each time you speak, you must identify yourself and your street address. The time limit for comments from the floor is three minutes, though I would encourage everyone to try to limit themselves to two minutes. Kindly address your comments to me rather to anyone else who has spoken. If, for example, you have a question seeking to clarify something that a prior speaker has said, you address the question to me, and I exercise my discretion and decide whether to have the prior speaker respond or not. I'll spare you a review of the other procedural rules for town meeting. If you have a device with you, you can quietly check the rules on the Town Meeting page at the Town website, carlisle.gov. Having said that, or if you don't have the ability to check online, if you do have a question about what we're doing procedurally, or would like to make some sort of motion but aren't quite sure how to do it, you may always rise to a point of order, and we will do our best to address your concern. You may also rise to a point of order if I make a mistake, or if you think I've made a mistake, or I might be making a mistake. Such interventions are welcome, and I know I've said this before, and no one ever believes me, but I hope after we get through Article IV, you will believe me this time. If anything interferes with your ability to hear, see, or otherwise participate in the proceedings, you may interrupt the meeting with a point of privilege to request that we rectify the situation. Also, please know that we do have special headsets available at the front right of the auditorium if anyone needs a little extra amplification of sound. And finally, at the conclusion of the special town meeting, you are all invited to stay and participate in a presentation and discussion of Carlisle's master plan. With that, I'm done with my preliminary comments. Are there any questions from anyone?
Wayne?
Yes, it's Complete Streets.
Complete Streets, not now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Complete Streets. The presentation is about Complete Streets, not the master plan. My mistake. See, I've already made one. But who's counting? All right. Turning to Article I, I understand that no motion will be made. And seeing that confirmed by no one standing, jumping up, we will proceed to Article II. And I recognize Ms. Reed.
I move Article II as printed in the motions handout.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Article II relates to acceptance of MGL Chapter 41, Section 111F, about the injured-on-duty indemnity fund. I recognize Ms. Reed.
When an officer gets injured on duty, we get reimbursement from insurance, but currently that insurance reimbursement now goes into our general fund, and the police chief has to struggle with his budget for the rest of the year because he has to get, you know, pay for overtime and additional staff, and then we have to, it looks like he's run at a deficit at the end of the year, and then we have to do a transfer of funds when really no such thing has happened. So this will just make everybody's life a little easier, and it's more or less a housekeeping thing, and it's allowed by state statute.
Thank you. And the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen was to support 5-0. FinCom support 5-0. Both of those are correct? Okay. Do we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? All right. The floor is open for debate. Would anyone like to speak to this motion? No one from the cafeteria? No one at Benfield, it looks like? Okay, so I think we are ready to proceed to a vote. We're voting on Article II, acceptance of the injured-on-duty indemnity fund provisions allowed by state statute. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, now I just need to check in with our remote locations. What was the vote in the cafeteria?
Six ayes.
Okay, so that was unanimous in the cafeteria. Thank you. So the motion passes unanimously, and I so declare. I recognize Ms. Arnold to make the motion under Article III.
I move that we accept Article III, Department Revolving Funds Bylaw, as printed in the motions handout.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Article III relates to the revolving funds, to allow for a revolving fund for deer hunting. Ms. Arnold, do you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly. We voted on this in the spring, but we neglected to amend the bylaw to allow for the deer-hunting revolving fund to be included. So this is again a housekeeping issue. The funds that are received are those typically that are provided by the hunters that have requested permits to bow hunt here in Carlisle, and this revolving fund helps pay for the expenses involved with that program.
Thank you. So we had votes recommending the adoption of this in favor from the Board of Selectmen 5-0, FinCom 5-0. Did we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Okay, with that, the floor is open for debate. Would anyone like to speak to the motion under Article III? Do we have someone? Okay. Please address the microphone.
My name is Janie Janetzko. I'm at 898 Maple Street, and I have a few questions about Article III, and I guess I would like those questions answered, if they can be. It was just said that the revolving fund was primarily, I think, said that this was going to be funded by the people who hunt. Well, the fee is $30, and there's 18 hunters. Last year, when I was attending a Board of Selectmen meeting, the Conservation Commission spoke, Sylvia Willard and Angie Verge, and it said at that time that the administrator, Mary Hopkins, had spent a great deal of uncompensated time, at that time, 60 hours of time, working on the deer hunt for which she was not compensated. So I don't think the $30 times 18 is going to fund this. So I would like very much to find out how Mary is going to be paid, because my understanding is she's putting a large number of hours in this year. So I would like that information. Will it cover more than Mary Hopkins? Will it also cover questions to Town Council or anyone else that needs it? And is there going to be an accounting of the dollars, meaning who spends what? Because that's going to be essential when a decision is made whether or not to continue the deer hunt. So if somebody could respond to those questions, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone prepared to address those questions?
Do you want to say anything, Tim?
I think, at the very least, it may be helpful to explain how revolving funds work. Well, if you're a town meeting goer, you're probably familiar with the article every year that approves, reauthorizes revolving funds the town has voted in prior years. What is required is that the town vote the purpose of the program, the limit of the funds that can be collected for that purpose, and what board or committee is authorized to spend from that fund. The idea is that the revenue, the charge, or the fee will offset the administration of the program. And I believe the limit on this fund is $600 or $700. It's not one of the larger revolving funds, and it does contain just the fees that the hunters have paid, and the fee structure hasn't changed since the program was initiated last year. Maybe that's something they want to address going forward. I don't believe that wages are directly paid out of this fund. It's, the Conservation Commission administers the program, but I don't believe that the clerk is directly compensated out of this fund at this time. I could be corrected on that, but, and I'm sorry, was there a third question that I might have missed, but happy to answer it.
There was a question about how the funds are accounted for, the inflows and outflows.
Well, as with any fund, deposits have to be made with the Treasurer's Office, and I would suggest that our town accountant would be happy to provide you with detail of the income and the outflow for this or any other revolving fund, or any fund in the town for that matter, if you're interested in seeing that. As I said, it's kind of on the small side as far as revolving funds, but it gives us a place to deposit the revenue from the hunter fees.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone from Conservation Commission, or another town body, or FinCom that wants to answer anything else with respect to those questions?
Angie Verge, I'm the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. At our meetings, the Commission has discussed the role of our administrator being used for the deer hunt, and we have spoken to the liaison on the Commission, to the Deer Committee, suggesting that there be a review of the fee to ensure that it does account for the administrative hours that we are paying. We have not heard any decision on that yet, and I'm assuming that that will be discussed during the budget process for next year.
Thank you. Any further debate on this article? Okay, seen none, and I don't have any messages from our other halls that anyone wishes to speak. I believe we're ready to move to a vote. So we are voting on the motion under Article III, which would authorize the creation of a revolving fund to handle the fees from the deer hunting program. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And in the cafeteria? What results do we have there?
Unanimous ayes.
Okay. And at Benfield? What results do we have? Great, thank you. So the motion pass requires a majority vote. It does pass by greater than a majority, and I so declare. Thank you. Okay, Article IV, the moderator's mistake article. So this is a redo. You had voted on this in the spring, but as you noticed, I do have to say the magic words, and I so declare whether it was a majority, two-thirds, and so forth. And I seem to have missed that, messed that up in the spring, so we're back again. I recognize Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that town meeting accept Article IV as written in the motions handout.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I mean, as you've just stated, this is a housekeeping. This is not adding another $93,000 to the budget. And the last time we did this vote, it was done as a majority vote and declared as a majority vote, but this type of article needs a two-thirds vote. As I remember, right, it was almost unanimous last time, but we do just want the paperwork to be correct.
Thank you. This is recommended support from both the Board of Selectmen and FinCom, 5-0 votes each. Do we have recommendations from any other town boards or committees? Presumably, long-term caps recommended this the first time around. We can probably make note of that. Okay, does anyone wish to speak to the article? Okay, then let's just move straight to a vote. This does require two-thirds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And in the cafeteria?
Seven ayes.
Motion passes unanimously, and I so declare. Thank you. On to Article V. Article V concerns additional authorization, an amendment to a prior vote on the town telecommunications tower at 1110 Westford Street. I recognize Mr. Lewis for the motion.
I move Article V, Public Safety Communications Project, as printed in the motions handout.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I recognize Mr. Friedman for 10 minutes to make a presentation under this motion, and if we could get the stage lights doused, thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm David Friedman, and I represent the Public Safety Communications Working Group. We are here to request funding and approval for an additional site for a town-owned tower on which to mount public safety antennas. What this is about, at its most basic level, is our collective responsibility to give our public safety professionals the capability they need to effectively do their jobs to protect the health, lives, and property of all Carlisle citizens while not putting themselves at unnecessary risk of their own health and safety. The additional funding we are seeking is less than an 8% increase over the $2.9 million approved almost unanimously by 2017 town meeting for a new public safety communication system, the result of years of planning by public safety officials and current and former Planning Board members in Selectmen. To recap the status of this project, the system approved in 2017 included four new towers in Carlisle, shown in red on this slide, and co-location on four other towers. The new tower at Bannadavis is complete. Co-location at the Middlesex School is pending in a butter lawsuit. The new tower at Proctor Road is complete. Co-location at the Middlesex School, I'm sorry. The new tower at Proctor Road is complete. There's a new antenna co-located on the privately-owned tower at 871 Bedford Road, and the antennas will soon be installed on Concord's and Nurse Nak Hill Tower. We had two planned backup towers, but have managed to eliminate one of them by building a 100-foot lattice at the fire station and mounting the antennas planned for a new tower at the police station on the rear roof of the building instead. So when the system is complete, there will be one less tower in the town center than planned. The one incomplete part of the system is the planned co-location on a privately-owned 80-foot monopole at 1022 Westford Street. We have come to the conclusion that this part of the plan will not work. Hence our request tonight for approval for a new site for a new town-owned tower. Why won't the 1022 site work? The core reason is the risk of cancellation of the required leases is too great. Our leases could be canceled here at short notice, without cause, and with no recourse for the town. We negotiated a slight reduction in rent, but do not believe negotiations could solve the fundamental problems with the primary underlying lease that is beyond our control. From some comments in the paper, some seem to have mistaken impression of what was planned at this site. It is not just a matter of putting up antennas and paying rent. Co-location at 1022 would require many months more in negotiation, procurement, permitting, and construction, including nearly $100,000 for a 10-foot extension, an investment that would be lost when the lease is terminated, then leaving the town without a functional system for many months while we sought approval and funding for, and then built the tower at 1110 Westford. We believe that the coverage from this site is not worth the near commercial rent rates we would be charged. It would be a mistake for the town to stick with the original plan at 1022. Why is this site so critical? The western hills and ridges create dead zones where first responders can't communicate in an emergency. This is not a theoretical issue. It has happened at great risk to the lives of our first responders. Reliable communication is the number-one priority for public safety. Without a tower in this area, the dead zones, the problem that justified this entire new system, would remain. The purple areas in the western part of town would continue to have spotty or no coverage in emergencies. Less extensive but still critical dead spots would remain in northeast Carlisle. What about the new site and new tower we are proposing tonight? First, and most importantly, as a town-owned tower, we would have permanent site control. Secondly, although payback of the investment might be 20 years, we would save millions of dollars over the expected service life of the new tower. And yes, this includes the costs of maintenance and insurance, comparable expenses And yes, this includes the costs of maintenance and insurance, comparable expenses that would be required at either site. Third, there's an additional risk at 1022 in that it barely extends over the current tree cover. Our investment here could well be compromised by future tree growth, not just around the tower, but anywhere between the tower and the dead zone shown on the previous slide. And importantly, the new tower at 1110 Westford Street, shown on the right in the slide, would provide significantly better coverage than co-location at 1022 Westford, shown on the left. Purple indicates dangerous areas of poor coverage. If you compare the areas in Carlisle in the circles, you can see virtually no gaps in coverage on the right with the new tower versus some remaining pockets on the left. For mutual aid, when neighboring officers come to Carlisle or vice versa, communications become, if possible, even more critical. Note how much better coverage there is in neighboring towns on the right at 1110 versus on the left in 1022. It is important to remember that when we presented the 2017 plan, we acknowledged that we were compromising coverage a bit to not place towers where he had originally proposed in the middle of subdivisions as close as possible to the high points in town. Aside from providing town control and the coverage advantage, what makes the 1110 site ideal? It is town-owned and has virtually no other known use for the town. It is an abandoned quarry at which quarrying has essentially pre-excavated for the tower foundation. And in order to ensure its viability before taking the step to bring the proposal to town meeting, we have already done a wetlands filing and received site plan approval from the planning board. The order of conditions from Conscom was appealed by an abutter, but the appeal process is proceeding quickly, so we expect to have DEP approval soon. With a two-thirds approval tonight, we should be able to move quickly to get the site work done, the foundation in, and the tower up, so that we can finally have an operable system next spring. Visibility. The photo simulations were done in the height of summer, so the deciduous trees are fully leafed out, and there would be somewhat more visibility in the winter. But we believe the tower and equipment will be pretty well screened from view year-round. The one place where the top of the tower will be clearly visible is from the sorely south fields. The tower will be steel gray, which will help it blend with the sky. This is the possible view from the end of the driveway of the house closest to the site. Trees to the west of the tower will be retained to provide as much natural screening as possible, and we will be doing plantings to further screen the base equipment as required by Conscom. Those driving along Westford Street will most likely not notice the tower. How did we arrive at $225,000 we are requesting tonight? The facility, tower, antennas, ground equipment, site work, and installation come to $410,000. The antennas were already included in the budget approved in 2017, and we will save about $80,000 that was budgeted for the extension at 1022 Westford. The net is $225,000. We have already spent about $2 million of the almost $3 million approved in 2017. The new tower is necessary to make that investment productive. And having already completed the parts of the project that are likely to require significant contingency funds, we still have about $100,000 remaining. We are not applying any of that to the new tower to ensure to the best of our ability that we will not need to return to town meeting after tonight for additional funds to complete the system. We understand the sound rationale for addressing budget items together at Springtown Meeting. We have asked for this significant additional appropriation outside the normal process because we believe that it would be unconscionable to delay any further, providing our first responders the mission-critical communications they require to do their jobs. There would also be some economic consequences to delaying, including the fact that the longer the system takes to get operational, the more we are losing the value of the investment we've already made in new radios, pagers, and other equipment. Some have questioned the 20-year payback and the significant savings we have claimed beyond 20 years. Some believe that 20 years from now, towers will no longer be needed, and so the town's investment in this tower is not sound. We do not believe that is the case. Technological improvements and increasingly sophisticated devices to access increasing amounts of data have resulted in a demand for more towers, not fewer, to respond to the corresponding increased demand for bandwidth. As we explained in 2017 in response to all the engineers in town who proposed alternatives, including satellites, tower-based radio is the only mission-critical communication solution for public safety. Our police and firefighters need to communicate with those in neighboring towns, and more broadly, with state and federal officials in case of disasters. The feds, the state, and cities and towns throughout the northeast are investing in tower-based systems. No one can predict the future with certainty, but we firmly believe this tower and the other three we've just built in town in the past year will still be standing and in service for well beyond the next 20 years. Again, we ask you to support our first responders with a system they can rely on to do the jobs we pay them to do without unnecessarily risking their health and their lives. Thank you.
On Article V, we have the Selectmen having voted to support by 5-0. FinCom voted to support 5-0. Do we have reports from any other town boards or committees? Add microphone two, please.
I'm Madeline Blake for the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously to support the article.
Thank you. Do we have any other town boards or committees? Okay, with that, the floor is open for debate. Three minutes. I recognize Ms. Pierce.
I'm Nancy Pierce of 1152 Westford Street. I move that the words, oops, sorry. Thank you. Quote, "Provided, however, that the telecommunications tower at 1110 Westford Street shall be used solely for public safety communications and not for any commercial purpose," semicolon, close quote, be inserted between the phrases, quote, "including the payment of costs incidental or related there to," close quote, and, quote, "and to authorize this selectman," close quote.
Thank you. Is there a second? The motion for amendment. Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Pierce was kind enough to provide us with text of the amendment, and we will get that projected in front of you for the moment. Those of you who are looking in your motion handout, the insert will be coming at approximately the middle.
I feel like I should do a little dance.
Why is it that you can never get?
You just pretended you got something in there.
Thank you for your indulgence on this, everyone.
I'm a rockin' radio shack. Check your shit out. I'll keep the head. As I know. Is that some sort of a code?
Okay, Ms. Pierce, you may begin. Thank you.
Okay. Is this okay? Yeah, okay. The Public Safety Communications Working Group has insisted that there is no alternative to building this public safety tower. If this is the only way to provide essential communications with emergency responders, and if that is the real purpose of building this tower, what is the harm of keeping this tower from changing into a cell tower once it is built? This would help an entire neighborhood and would not endanger emergency responders or interfere with their communications in any way. I've been assured that the working group and the Board of Selectmen do not intend to rent space on this tower to cell companies, and I acknowledge that they have said this, but that promise rests on the goodwill of the current Board of Selectmen and Planning Board, and all the current members will eventually be replaced. That's what I'm concerned about. What I'm afraid is that it will be very easy for future leaders of the town to fall for promises of money from renting space on that cell tower, and we homeowners, I have discovered, will not be protected at all once that tower is built. This fear of this public safety tower morphing into a cell tower is not as delusional as you might think. Here are some concrete clues that, once the tower is built, the town can add cell service easily and quickly. Next slide. The first clue is from a drawing, one of the permitting drawings, which I have zoomed in. Next slide to show the part of the drawing where there are labels for slots where cellular connections for two different providers can be easily mounted without any further construction required. Those are the lines that are outlined in red with labels that say "Future Radiation Center," and the numbers show their elevation above ground levels. I've been told that these are a boilerplate entry on such drawings, and that the working group did not ask for this, but that doesn't mean that those slots will not be there once the tower is built. Next slide. I also searched the mosquito archives, and I found that at public meetings in 2017, David Friedman said that the working group intended to reach out to cell companies. Next slide. And Chief Fisher also talked about hoping for revenue from cell companies. Next slide. Once the towers were built. Another worry is that the sorely cell tower that already exists was allowed 300 feet from the home at 1080 Westford Street despite the bylaw's restriction that no tower could be built within 900 feet of a residence and despite the owner's protest. So this is a clue that there are loopholes. Now, this public safety tower is rightly exempt from having to meet the requirements of that personal wireless communication facility's bylaw because it's for public safety, and that's definitely fair, but that bylaw has loopholes big enough to drive a truck through, and that's what I'm worried about. I'm summarizing based on what I could understand from the convoluted language of the bylaw itself, and I apologize for having to leave a lot of things out due to time, but the most relevant loophole is that, once this tower is built, it will obviously be an existing tower, and it will be on town land. And according to this personal wireless communications facility bylaw, if a future Board of Selectmen decides to rent out space on the tower to a cell company, the Planning Board has to put a higher priority on a permit for a cell company that wants to co-locate on an existing tower, especially if it's on town-owned land, and the cell company will not have to meet the other requirements to build a new tower. Next slide. What this means is that even though a new tower could not be permitted within the 900-foot circle that's shown on the slide, where there are 12 homes or 100 feet from a vernal pool, once this tower becomes an existing tower, we will lose all the protections that the bylaw would normally give us, and it'd be like a bowl of M&Ms in the center of a room full of toddlers. It'll be the only game in town. I've also discovered that, when you say you're worried about a cell tower nearby, many people immediately assume that you're ignorant, that you haven't heard, that the FCC says that there are no health risks. I've said this before, and I will repeat. My concern is not about health problems, it's about financial loss. Just like the measles epidemic last year showed, if enough people believe in risks, whether it's from vaccinations or from cell towers, it doesn't matter whether it's true or not, there will still be an effect. And in this case, if we turn those intermittent transmissions from a public safety tower into 24/7 cellular radiation, it will surely lower our property values because people who are scared of the health effects will not even look at a house near a cell tower. This is the danger that I'm really concerned about. I've estimated elsewhere that owners of houses nearby could lose between $800,000...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, where was that from? Was that from the cafeteria? Okay. I'm sorry, please proceed.
To repeat, I've asked for this safeguard to give us a guarantee for future buyers of our homes that this is not a cell tower in disguise. To repeat, this amendment would not possibly interfere in any way with police or fire or EMT communications, which is why the town says it needs this tower, but it would be a shield for your fellow citizens against certain loss. Just as a personal note, since I moved to town 30 years ago, I have always felt like I live in a town where people watch out for each other and where the people who run the town want to do the best thing for all of its citizens. And my belief in that has been shaken now. Your support for this amendment would help to affirm my optimism about the town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, so let's just clarify exactly what we're looking at here, and that is an amendment that would specify a restriction that the cell tower not be used for commercial purposes, to allow commercial companies to locate an antenna on it. The vote on amendment would be a majority vote. The article itself, the motion under the, the full motion under the article would require two-thirds. However, for the amendment, where we're just figuring out what the language will be in the motion that we will ultimately vote on, that would require a 50% majority to pass. the motion that we will ultimately vote on, that would require a 50% majority to pass. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment that is now on the floor? Did the selectmen have any commentary?
The selectmen voted with a vote of four to one abstention not to support this amendment.
Okay, did, did you want to?
I just wanted to say, however, we also had another vote that said that we wanted to reaffirm our support for the article as a whole regardless of whether this amendment is passed or not.
Okay, thank you. Did FinCom have an opportunity to consider this amendment?
Yes, FinCom voted to oppose this amendment with the same comment that either way, FinCom supports the article.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment? Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Casey Hurley. I live at 1170 Westford Street, right down the street from this proposed tower, and I definitely support the amendment. I don't see any reason why, if we are using this tower as a safety communications tower, which I support, safety, safety, and our safety services, I definitely support this amendment to not have commercial cell service at this tower that is supposed to be for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Yes, at microphone two, please.
I'm Clyde Kessel of 385 Curb Street. I'm wondering if somebody could clarify, at some future town meeting, could town meeting just reverse the effect of this amendment and vote to add cellular antennas to that tower?
Does someone want to address that? Mr. Brown?
Yes, that is true. At a future town meeting, if the town decided that they wanted to allow cellular coverage, the amendment could be overturned. I also want to point out that, you know, when we were considering this, in order for a cellular company to go on that tower, we would need to lease the tower, or part of the tower, and we would need to lease ground space for the building that they would, you know, the small building that they would have to build in order to do that. That would have to come to town meeting. So with or without this amendment, it needs to come to town meeting for approval before we could lease any space on the tower.
Thank you. At microphone four, thank you.
Ryan Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. Actually, following up on that, given that anything has to come before a town meeting at some point in the future anyway for any lease, I'd just like to know the reasoning behind this selectmen as well as FinCom's decision not to support the amendment. If there was any discussion about it, if there's individual opinions, or if there was a joint consensus by the boards as to why there was a decision not to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll allow that question. Ms. Reed, could you comment for the selectmen?
Well, precisely because it has to come back to town meeting anyway, and this adds, doesn't really add any extra protection, in our opinion.
And FinCom?
The conversation was similar at FinCom.
Okay, thank you. Any other debate? Mr. Levitan?
Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road. I have not really watched this very closely. I just think that we can say, yes, it has to come back to a town meeting to do anything commercial, but this is sort of feels like a community opportunity to say what we want and what we don't want. I think this is a great amendment.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak from the cafeteria?
No.
No, okay. And I'll ask down at Benfield, I'm going to check the floor here again, looks like we have another speaker, but if someone from Benfield would like to speak, please, you can send me, send me a message on the chat, and we'll recognize you the next opportunity we get. At microphone four.
David Erickson, 237 Fisk Street. I have to say, I'm opposed to the amendment. I've always found cell coverage in Carlisle to be very spotty, and in fact, I get very poor coverage at our house. I'm not sure that this would improve it. I would be willing to have a cell tower much closer to my house. You know, if we're going to use our cell phones, we need to have cell towers. Now, this is not about a cell tower, but if one were to be built, I would not oppose it. And so I hate to see an amendment that specifically precludes it, although, as it was brought up, it doesn't in fact preclude it. So to some degree, it's irrelevant whether the amendment's approved or not. I would still urge people to vote against the amendment.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, microphone four, and then next at microphone five.
Albert Kennedy, 1171 Westford Street. I think it should be noted that there is a current cellphone tower within a stone's throw from where this proposed tower would be, so it's not as if we don't have any towers in the area. We will have two towers within several hundred feet of each other in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone five.
Don Allen, 61 Pilgrim Path. I'd just like to note or be corrected, if that's necessary, that the point was made that the, if this amendment is passed, it becomes part of the bylaw. To change it at a later time, I believe, would require a two-thirds vote of town meeting. So it's different than if we pass it now by majority, adding it to the, adding it to the bylaw. It'd be more difficult to overturn it later on.
I'll ask someone to correct me if I get this wrong, but this is not the bylaw itself. It's an authorization to spend money. The bylaw controls where cell towers may be sited, so this is not a, this is, we're not voting on the bylaw here in this.
Okay. Perhaps I used the wrong word when I said, when I used the word "bylaw," but the point is, is that it requires a two-thirds vote. I see. So what you're saying is that if the town wanted to overturn this amendment, negate this amendment later on, it would just require a majority vote, not a two-thirds, which was, which is my point.
Yes, it would be a majority vote in, to overturn this aspect of tonight's vote, should this pass. Now, a separate question, as Mr. Brown pointed out, that even if you overturned it, any lease would require coming back to town meeting in any event to authorize the lease. And is that a two-thirds vote? So you're back to a two-thirds vote anyway. So, Mr. Allen, you got to the same place, just a different path.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your assistance. Yes.
John Richardson, 547 Westford. Actually, I just have a question for both sides. If I understand it, we're balancing the potential for financial harm to homeowners from buyers who are scared of cell phones versus the potential benefit to the town if a cell company wanted to rent that space from us. Could we put numbers on each one of those? I believe, ma'am, you were about to talk about that before the weird interruption. What were you going to say?
You address your questions through me.
Mr. Chair, could we somehow ask our neighbor if she could clarify that? Or moderator, sir?
I'm sorry, and I think I forgot to get you to identify yourself and your address.
You did.
You did not request that I identify myself, and yet I did.
I did at the beginning, okay, okay.
And then maybe if Mr., well, I'd also be interested if Mr. Friedman or somebody else could tell us, you know, if they did want to rent it, how much would that be?
I'm embarrassed to say, Mr. Richardson and I go way back, and I just didn't recognize you. It must be the gray hair, John. I only do that with friends, the rest of you, don't worry. Ms. Pierce, I think that was, that was a fair question. I'd appreciate if you could respond to it, please.
I've estimated, based on something I read, that we might lose 10 to 15% of the assessed value of our houses, well, actually, of the market value, but I didn't have the market value, so I used the assessed value. And 10 to 15% of the assessed value of the houses that are within 900 feet of the proposed tower would range between 860,001,300, which I just have to note is just way beyond any money that the town would save by building this tower.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments? We'll go to microphone four, and then Mr. Friedman, I'll recognize you if you would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Andrea Cryevska from 89 Robbins Drive, relatively new to town and relatively new to this issue. I actually had a question about the general, is this, is this concept an issue on the other towers that the town owns? Are, can we add cell to any of the towers we own? Or we seem to be honing in on this tower. Are the other ones in residential areas? Is this just an issue across the board that we need to look at as a community? I just honestly, I'm, like I said, very new to the issue.
The amendment here is specifically with respect to authorizing
Correct.
the selectmen on a lease on this particular tower. So, so the scope of this discussion is this tower alone.
Okay. And the amendment would protect, you said, we would have to vote again to, again, lease cell on this particular tower. Additionally, that same vote would have to be across for any of the other towers that the town has recently built. Correct?
So, Mr. Friedman, there are other towers that the town has built, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so yes.
Okay.
That's the answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, were there other comments you wanted to make?
Just a couple of points of, well, first, to answer the question that was asked about what the possible revenue might be, the amount that the town is in the neighborhood of, you know, 13 to 15,000 dollars for a carrier. Theoretically, you could have two or three carriers, so you could be talking 15 to 45,000 dollars a year for leasing space on this particular tower. And to be clear, I explained this also to Ms. Pierce, the two slots that were shown on that elevation that she showed are not possible co-location sites, not because there was no intent or not because we didn't ask for those to be shown there, it's because it's a steel tower, and there is not room within the tower to put cellular antennas, and they wouldn't, if they, if there was room, they wouldn't be able to broadcast through the steel of the tower. So if there was to be any co-location on this tower, it would have to be on an extension of this tower. And also, to be clear, there's a theoretical possibility that the town could lease space on either the Proctor Road Tower or the Banda Davis Tower for cellular, but again, it would require separate extensions because those towers are also built out of steel and are not built to take cellular in the interior.
So, separate extensions and, again, subject to coming back to town meeting for the authorization to lease. Okay, any other comments or debate on the amendment itself? And we have no desire for comments from Benfield, but I can see people are still attentively listening, so thank you, and greetings down there. Any comment in the cafeteria?
No.
No, okay, thank you. So I believe we are ready to vote on the amendment, and actually, I'm sorry, if you could possibly put that up again, I would greatly appreciate it. And Sam, if we could just get the lights so that everyone can see exactly where the amendment is. Okay, so if, for those of you who are looking at your motion, handout just below where it says parcel 1840-0, we would be inserting the words, "Provided, however, that the telecommunications tower at 1110 Westford Street shall be used solely for public safety communications and not for any commercial purpose." So this is a majority vote on that amendment alone. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And in the cafeteria?
Three, four, one against.
Okay, and we'll have our vote at Benfield in just a moment, as soon as you're ready. The motion required a majority to pass. I believe it has succeeded in getting a majority, so I so declare. So the motion as amended is now on the floor for debate. So this is now to authorize the motion with this text as you, as you see it. Would anyone wish to speak to the motion? Yes, sir, please step forward.
Hello, my name is Yutin Lin from 1146 Westford Street. The system designed and approved in 2017 already resolves that dead zones that, that was an issue for the public safety, for the police and the fire department. And from what we were able to find on mosquito, the, could we get to the next slide, please? Maybe a few more slides. So, yes, thank you. So from this slide, you can see that it's nearly perfect coverage in all of Carlisle. There's a few spots of purple on the western side. From what I was able to find out, there's no dwellings on that area. And according to the, to the working group, the cost to build this additional second tower right next to an existing tower at Sorley Farm is going to be $410,000. And in order to accomplish this, they're going to ask for nearly a quarter million dollars beyond the 3 million that they, or nearly 3 million that they already got approved in 2017. I don't think this is necessary because back in 2017, all they needed was to, they came to town to ask for, to resolve the dead, dead spots, dead zones in the western side of town. Also, one of the, one of the things that they have, they have said was that, by building it ourselves, we could be saving money in first 10 years. I think that I read that in the mosquito. When we did our own calculations, we found that it would take at least 20, almost 20 years for the town to start breaking even. And by the time you get up to 30 years, the town is saving roughly $100,000 in today's dollars. Could I get the next slide, please? And we all know that the telecom is a fast-changing industry. I believe in 20 years, most of the equipment will be outdated and obsolete. The tower may not be, but everything else would be. So any of this, you know, I can't, I can't predict the future, and maybe you can. Thank you.
Thank you. More debate on the main motion. Let me see if someone else would like to speak first, and then we'll recognize you. At microphone one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ken Fong. I live at 132 Hemlock Hill Road. I've worked in public safety for the last 32 years, and I also overseen and I also overseen one of the largest 911 call centers in New England. I can tell you that police, fire, and EMS use of this tower, if there are dead zones, can result in life or death situations. And if officers and firefighters and EMTs can't receive critical information, can't request additional aid, if they can't be updated by dispatch, that's going to create some serious outcomes. And so I know there's been some concern about the system becoming obsolete. I can tell you that they're on the horizon between cellular, satellite, and internet coverage will not replace radio coverage. Radio coverage will be here to stay for some period of time because those other systems can easily be overloaded and are not sufficiently robust for public safety use. Additionally, the degradation by weather is a serious problem. And I live in one of the neighborhoods that would be affected, that are affected by poor radio coverage. And so on behalf of the families in my neighborhood, I would ask that my fellow residents support this proposal for the new communication tower for the safety of all residents in the area and in all of Carlisle. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Friedman?
So I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments from Mr. Lin. The coverage plot that he showed was from Talk Out Radio. In 2017, we showed a whole series of coverage plots, and I didn't go back through them for the sake of time, but it's the Talk Back coverage that had the dead zones shown in 2017. The Talk Out is less of a concern, but it's the Talk Back specifically where a first responder is in the field and needs to communicate or in a basement of a building on fire and needs to communicate where the dead zones are a problem. So that drawing is not accurate. Also, in terms of the dollar amounts, in terms of what they showed for the savings, they included a $2,000 annual maintenance for the new tower, but didn't include any maintenance for the extension on the 1022 site. And, you know, our sense is is that maintenance costs on both would be about the same. So the savings over that period of time would be a significant amount. If you took the $2,000 a year over that 30 years, that's another $60,000, so it makes a significant difference. We believe this tower will be in use for some 50 years or more, and so the savings will be indeed millions of dollars. I want to reiterate that the issue about this is not primarily about the savings. The issue is the lack of security with the 1022 site. When the landowner originally signed his lease with the tower company, it's a 20-year lease. That lease is up in 2028. So any invest... And the likelihood of the landowner re-upping for that lease is probably not great. Also, as we had noted in many of the presentations prior to this, the leases between the landowner and the tower company and the T-Mobile both allow those parties to exit the lease on 90 days' notice at any time.
Thank you. Add microphone one, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Alexander. I'm at 1080 Westford Street. My issue is with the wetlands that will be affected by this tower at 1110 Westford Street. The tower will be approximately 15 feet away from a vernal pool currently holding water and next to wetlands. The vernal pool happens to be in an old quarry surrounded by granite walls. Directly adjacent are two streams and a marshy pond with additional heavily vegetated wetlands. DEP is presently evaluating this site on appeal, and I was told that an evaluation may take anywhere from two weeks to two years. According to DEP, if this vernal pool had been certified, no construction would be allowed on this half-acre site. Conscom said... Excuse me, allergies. Conscom said there is no bylaw in Carlisle that compelled them to certify this pool. So Conscom did not take the ethical approach to certify and protect this fragile habitat and ecosystem. It is unfortunate that Carlisle residents had not known of this tower plan prior to the town's application submission because anyone could have had this pool certified and protected through a simple mass wildlife natural heritage application process. If wetlands protection is important to you, please visit this 1110 Westford Street site. Surely, there are open spaces to consider for this communications tower away from fragile wetlands and out of residential areas. Let's not set a precedent for future 5G towers to be waved through. It's important to adhere to bylaws that created 900-foot buffers, which didn't help me 10 years ago at 1022, which is my next-door neighbor. That tower is 300 feet away from my home. So sacrificing wetland preservation is really concerning to me. So I ask you, please, to support Carlisle's bylaws and preservation of our natural resources. Let's avoid, also, discrimination against a smaller neighborhood, which is home to equally important families like your own. Please vote against this site and against additional funding. Try to find another place to support this important communications tower. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we don't applause. We're legislature, just remember that. Mr. Cruz?
Thank you. Brian Cruz, 71 Rogers Road. I'm going to preface what I'm saying by noting that I do think the town should do whatever it needs to to ensure that the public safety communications are being run effectively as possible. I am concerned, however, by the way in which this has been brought before town meeting in October outside of the annual meeting process and seemed to have been fairly rushed through any public meetings before public bodies. I'm sure most people found out about this fairly recently through Mesquite Hill articles. And I will say that additionally, it seems concerning to me that all that was reviewed in negotiating the original site was with respect to cost and trying to negotiate down the lease price. But there was real no substantial negotiation regarding any way for the town to have more security in the site long-term, whether it was through trying to assume the lease in the future or being able to negotiate directly with the landowner at some point. And it's my understanding nothing like that ever actually happened. It was just decided it would be too complicated or difficult, and so we should move on to another site. So assuming that town meeting goes ahead and approves this article this evening, I would strongly urge the town officials to, notwithstanding that approval, go ahead over the winter and really try to negotiate an ability to find some way to make 1022 work in the interim and at least do due diligence on that and rather than just assume it's too complicated and not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Verge?
Angie Verge, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. I just wanted to speak to the comments about our permitting process. And just wanted to clarify that the commission is charged to be a regulatory board for the state laws, the Wetland Protection Act and the Carlisle Wetland Protection bylaws. Certified vernal pools unfortunately are not protected and considered jurisdictional under the Wetland Protection Act nor under the Carlisle Wetland Protection bylaw. So although we are dedicated conservationists and we believe in protecting all of the resources, if we had denied this permit based on those reasons, it could have easily been appealed and it would have come back, you know, as permissible. So what we did as a commission is we put orders onto the project to ensure that the resource area and the surrounded wetlands would be protected using, you know, standard practices. And the filing was complete, and that's why we permitted the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me take the comments at microphone one first.
Thanks. Roy Bondurant, 343 Autumn Lane. I have a couple of questions and maybe an observation. So question number one is, you kind of blew through it on the presentation, but the Middlesex School Tower, which is a key part of this whole system, is under litigation. I heard it was in Land Court. If that's true, that could go for decades. So what's the plan if Middlesex School falls through? Are you going to be back here next year looking to relocate, you know, build a tower in the neighborhoods again? That was the, you know, go back to the very, very original plan? I hope not, but I'd like to know what the plan is. I couldn't support spending another penny on this project if the town doesn't have an alternative that's acceptable to the town before going forward. So that's question number one. What's the backup plan for Middlesex when that goes down? Heard a lot about how urgent and vital this is. Don't dispute that at all in the bigger scheme of things. Now, two years ago or three years ago, when the informational meetings were happening on the original proposal, I went to one. I didn't get them all, so I might have missed this. But I'd really like to hear one documented case of a loss of life or property in Carlisle that can be attributed to, you know, inadequate radio coverage. So that would be interesting. Maybe I missed it, like I said, but I haven't heard it or seen it written down. Finally, an observation. I think you guys have done a lot of work analyzing costs and sharpening your pencil and figuring out what's the lower-cost alternative over, you know, kind of some very hard-to-understand futures. But a couple of folks that have spoken here have mentioned the loss of property value. And I think that's a very real concern. And I kind of hope, and I'm guessing that you didn't really factor that as a cost. You know, if somebody loses property value to the tune of what Ms. Pierce was saying, which I think is actually low, she, you know, you could... The town could be out a lot more tax revenue than it's saving with these towers. If residents decide to litigate, who knows where that could go? So I think that's something to keep in mind, too, and factor into cost calculations is what's going to happen when you do it. It doesn't matter whether the, you know, when the tower goes up, the property values are going to go down. How much will depend on all the details. But when the tower goes up, the values will go down. And it won't matter whether it's a cell tower or a public safety tower, they're going to go down. And that's just the scheme of things. So thank you.
Okay, so I have... No applause. I have three questions. One was about a backup plan in the event that the Middlesex Tower doesn't go forward. Second was asking about instances of inadequate radio coverage and what were the impacts of that. And then third was relative to any analysis, if there has been any, on decreased property tax revenues as a result of potential property value impact. Were you standing up to address any of those?
I'd be willing to address question number two.
Okay, please.
Matt Zvodik, Sunset Road. In the interest of time tonight, we didn't provide audio recordings. However, every transmission that is made, whether it makes it or not, whether it's garbled or not, is recorded in our dispatch center. And we could play all night long transmissions that did not make it through. We're not audible, we're not understandable. But I'll recount a personal tale instead, directly related to this question. It was a number of years ago, maybe five or six years ago, we had a building fire on River Road. The fire was in an attic, which to get there was second floor, pull downstairs, and then a little adventure, maybe 20 feet or so in that attic to find the seat of the fire. Radio coverage was not usable inside that attic. We advanced with a uncharged hose line, given the complexity of our route. And once we found the seat of the fire, had called several times over the radio to get the charged hose line, which means the pump operator then starts pumping water to our hose so we can put the fire out. Unfortunately, since the radio did not make it... Now, at this point, the pump operator is maybe 20 feet away from where we were inside the building. We had to actually exit the attic because the vinyl ductwork was flashing at that point, making extremely hot temperatures, somewhere in the range of over 300 degrees as our masks started to bubble, which is the indication of that temperature. I had to find a window that was close to the side of the building the pump operator was working on. I had to scream out of that window several times because of the roar of all the engines in the area and ask him to charge the line, at which point I had to then go back in with the charged hose line and try to address the fire situation. I believe we had one member that was slightly injured at that point. It was very minor in nature. And it was due to exiting the attic, not actually fighting the fire. But there is a good study on addressing question two.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Friedman, were you going to address either or both of those two questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the Middlesex Tower is an important part of the public communication system, but it is not as critical as the tower on the western corridor of town. So if and when we get this tower approved and up, we will make the system operational without the Middlesex Tower. The main impact of not having the Middlesex Tower would be communication for EMTs and communication on the way to hospitals. So it's an important part of the system, but it's not critical in the same way that this one is. There are... The southern part of town along that border tends to be pretty low. So I would say, you know, one of the things we did was we looked at all the possible town-owned parcels in town, and there's a couple of them down along the border, but they tend to be in the middle of swamps and therefore are not suitable sites that get us any of the altitude that we would need. So that's the answer with regard to Middlesex. With regard to property values, you know, the internet is sort of forever now, so there's a lot of material out there. I'm not going to speak to what the likelihood is. I believe Ms. Pierce has stated before that she got her 10 to 15%. Something she read was a claim that was made by one of the residents who lived near one of the sites we proposed earlier at one of the high points in town at Heald Road, not with any particular substantiation of that. I would note that there are homes closer to the proposed tower at 1110 Westford to the tower that this town meeting approved that's at Proctor Road. There are homes closer to the public safety tower that this town meeting approved that's at the fire station. And there are homes closer to the tower that's still up at the police station that will not be replaced, but a replacement was approved at the previous town meeting. I'd also note that there are multiple cellular antennas within the antenna of First Religious, which is, there are a lot of homes closer to that than closer to this. And those homes also happen to be close to the fire station tower. So it's, as far as I know, the assessors have not been besieged by people who live adjacent to those, both public safety and commercial cellular towers, concerned about property values.
Thank you. Add microphone one.
Hi, my name's Laura Bellistero. I'm a realtor in town, and I happen to have the house right next door to this spot for sale, 1146 Westford Street. It's been on the market for about 10 days. We have a buyer right now who is not putting an offer in on the property until they hear the results of this. And I can tell you, for this family, this decision will greatly affect their value of their property.
Thank you. Any more... Any more, Mr. Trost, is it back there?
Yes.
My eyes, my eyes are fading.
151 Concord Street. I just have a question as a concerned member of the Historical Society. And this is in no way an objection to the proposal. But has any consideration been given to the historic significance of the site in the planning of the location of the tower and its relation to the quarry?
Mr. Friedman?
So I want to be clear about this because there was a suggestion earlier, you know, find another site. This is the only town-owned parcel in this part of Carlisle, one, period. And it's the only one within the entire western corridor that could even be possible site for a cell tower. So we're not proposing this site because we don't think that any of these other considerations matter. We're proposing it because it's the only town-owned site in this area. The reason why there's, we proposed a tower up at Proctor Road is because we needed a tower that would cover that part of town. But that is the only town-owned parcel in that area where we could propose a tower. They, there aren't alternatives. The Public Safety Communication Working Group has, in response to questions from FinCom, basically our recommendation to the selectmen whose decision it would be how to proceed on this, because of all the concerns with 1022 and because of the great improvement that the tower here at 1110 would do, would be not to proceed with the 1022 site. We think it would be a waste of the town's money and would not serve our first responders appropriately. So, you know, we would be back here in the spring, essentially with this proposal again. It is the only option to complete this system.
Okay, and I think that my question might have been misunderstood. I'm not objecting at all to the use of the site. I'm just asking if there was any consideration in the planning of the use of the specific site to protect any aspects of the historic elements of the quarry? Or will it just be completely covered over?
No, it won't be completely covered over. The, there's basically two main excavated areas. And the rear excavated area, where there's a possible certifiable vernal pool, will not be impacted at all. So that will remain. So there will be some sort of old quarry that is still preserved.
Okay, no, that's all I wanted to just confirm. So it is a historic quarry from the standpoint of, it is the granite base for the Daniel Chester French statue in Concord. And it is the source of the granite for the obelisk at the bridge. So I just think some elements of, you know, preserving the fact that the quarry was there would be in order.
Thank you. Ed, microphone four.
Jessie Svotek, 114 Sunset Road. I ask that you support this as the wife of a firefighter whose safety is at risk on a daily basis when they are responding to your calls for help. So we ask that you support them and try and make their job as safe as possible.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
So FinCom has a statement at some point.
Okay, please proceed, and then we'll go back to microphone two.
So as we said earlier, regardless of the amendment, FinCom supports Article 5. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support Article 5, which increases the borrowing authority to build the telecommunications tower at 110 Westford. FinCom maintains a high bar for considering funding requests outside the annual budgeting process. The annual budgeting process enables the town to consider and prioritize a request as in collective. To consider funding requests outside the normal budgeting process increases taxpayer burden without the appropriate bore of selectmen in FinCom prioritization discussions. There are two significant considerations in FinCom's support of Article 5. First, the support of this article does not impact the current year, the current FY '20 budget. The requests will be funded through short-term borrowing until a long-term bond is issued for this and other projects. Interest and principal payment will begin in FY '21. Secondly, this article is in support of a public safety concern. And funding for public safety receives high prioritization during the budgeting process. FinCom supported the Public Safety Communications System project when it was originally presented at ATM in May 2017. And based on our discussions with the Communications Systems Committee and our own deliberation, FinCom believes constructing this tower is required to complete this important project. During the normal budgeting process, this funding request would be prioritized over other projects considered at annual town meetings. If this article passes, there will be projects, a project or projects that will not be funded in FY '21, which is the next town meeting, as these funds will have already been allocated to this project. It is with this understanding that FinCom supports this article.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to microphone two, and then we will continue around in this direction. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm Françoise Bondon from 385 Curve Street. As any, considering that some of the towers have been built practically on the border of Carlisle, any of the communication are cooperated with the other towns? In other words, do we have to supply all the communication for our town security communication? Or is there cooperation happening with other towns?
Okay, perhaps the, either one of, either one of you can answer. Whoever has the answer.
Sure, if I could, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Fisher, obviously Chief of Police, but I also serve regionally with NEMLEC. Our tower supply pass-through when we're going places the same way as when I was driving to Beverly last night to help them, that my radio worked there. We have an agreement with Chelmsford. We actually, they'll allow us to use something if we ever need it up their way because they reserve the right to maybe co-locate a receiver on the Proctor Road site, a small receiver. They haven't needed that yet. They just did some enhancement their way. But, you know, the radios, the radios in our area are like, this is a critical infrastructure. And I don't, I'm going to, that's kind of the finish to that question. But the only other thing I was going to offer is that I don't have, I sat here, but I don't have a story better than Matt's. It's personal where I almost got seriously injured. However, I have numerous times in my eight-plus years here been extremely aggravated when I had something important to tell someone and not been able to tell them. And it's not that my life was in danger, but the people who I was trying to help in this town, their situations were a little more in peril because I wasn't able to talk quickly. And that's even heavier than when something bad happens to us because we signed up for this, but they didn't, you didn't. But it is our job to make sure that, you know, we can do what we need to do. I don't like, I don't like being morbid. I think this town has been incredibly supportive to the police department and the fire department since I've been here. But this is really important. And I hope that we can answer any questions. Willing to stay here as long as it takes. But I ask you to consider this, this important proposal.
Thank you, Chief Fisher. Chief Saros.
Brian Saros, 96 Litchfield Drive. Also here is your fire chief. I hope we don't have to beat the drum about the need for this. But, you know, we recruit people, your neighbors, to do this job. Any of you who are interested? Here I am. We recruit you to do it. And it's rewarding, and people enjoy doing it. And the first time, however, we do training and they go into a basement and they realize they can't communicate with anybody and you can't communicate with them. Numerous times, I've had them come out of the basement and look at me and say, I'm not sure I signed up for this. It's something we need. In terms of the, why we made this change? So at some point, we're the stewards, trying to be the stewards of the town's money. And at some point, it's not financially responsible for us to ask you to invest a lot of money into a tower that we have no control over. This is an attempt to be financially responsible as well as responsible for security. Because when we get kicked off and we have to move and it takes a long time to move, that's a huge hole for us. The ability for us, you know, we don't call mutual aid all that often. We do a nice job of covering. But when we need it, we need it. And we need them to be able to communicate with us. And the additional coverage we have with this new tower and this location, and it would be quite a bit over the tree level, and that would make a big difference to us, is important. I will just reiterate that it is true. So in terms of communication with other towns, that was a question. We, you know, Nurse Neck Hill is not in Carlisle. So we are, they are helping us by siding towers there. A Middlesex school is not, they're helping us there. We are also helping Concord. We'll be able to use Banda Davis Tower as well. Yes, we coordinate with other towns, and it helps us and it helps them. Thank you. Please support this.
Thank you. Ms. Maroni.
Hi, Vanessa Maroni from Bedford Road. So I would like to voice my unwavering support, it's a yes vote, for this article for additional funds necessary to complete the public safety telecommunications tower project. At annual town meeting in 2017, the majority of us approved nearly $3 million for a new tower-based comprehensive system. It was the outcome of years of study. Most of the work on the new system has been done, and three new towers have already been installed. As a taxpayer who voted to support our first responders first in 2016 and then again at the 2017 town meeting, I do not want to see my investment depreciate without it ever having been even used yet. Nothing's been used yet. If we do not approve these funds tonight to proactively address this very unfortunate and unforeseen complication of the co-location, then we will not be giving our first responders the best tools that they need to safely do their job, which of course is to keep the rest of us safe. And we're really lucky to have them. So I would vote yes tonight. I will be voting yes and to support our first responders who have been using an antiquated system for far too many years and to protect our nearly $3 million investment, which we've already committed to.
Thank you. I'll recognize Mr. Pierce at microphone two. And I would ask that anyone else wishing to speak, please queue up at the microphones because I believe we're getting close to a vote.
Rick Pierce, 1152 Westford Street. Now, with the Chief of Police's comments about what happened, in fact, a couple of years ago, they had, they had a chance to start up the, to start the project going. They had, there was a chance to go there. They neglected doing it. If they had taken that, I'm very garnet. If they had taken that chance, they would have been up and running now, and there would have been no, we would be, we would be solid with it. But they neglected to take that opportunity.
Thank you. Sir, microphone one.
Good evening, everyone. Sunil Kandalwal, 11.
You can lift the microphone a little bit if you'd like.
Good evening, everyone. Sunil Kandalwal, 1149 Westford Street. I would be looking this tower at 1110 Westford Street pretty much every day because I think I visited the site when the DEP was coming there. And the site will be hardly like 50 to 60 feet away from the road. My main concern is I think we are not opposing a tower. What we are looking for, working group, to explore all the possible options at the existing tower, right? We heard that lease, negotiating a lease might be a little complex there. And we heard that maybe the coverage might not be better there, right? But has there been any discussion after April with that person who owns the lease, if they are coming to come back and really talk to us? The second thing is, has there been any discussion on that tower? If there isn't any option to cover the gaps that has been there? I think we have seen the multiple drawings. To me, it looks like coverage is pretty, pretty good. But obviously, based on the comments that we heard, there might be some gaps there. But as a resident of that neighborhood, having two towers within 900 feet really does not make me feel proud of being a resident of Carlisle. That's what I want to consider this group. And that's why I request everybody to vote no for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, microphone five. General rule, anyone may adjust the microphone so they're comfortable and you can speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Casey Hurley. I live at 1170 Westford Street, second closest to the proposed new tower other than Mr. Sunil, who just spoke. I wanted to point out something that Mr. Friedman said. He said this was the only option. But I would like to point out that it is not the only option. And I would also like to point out that there was another option, there still is another option, that could have been implemented months ago. If this was so, if there was such a concern for safety and such a concern to save lives, why wasn't action taken at the tower that already exists months ago? And so that's, that's my point. So I would request, I would request that that option be explored more as a different viable option instead of building a whole nother tower and placing two towers within 900 feet of our properties.
Thank you. Ed, microphone four, please.
Hi, my name's Elena Kennedy, and I'm at 1171 Westford Street. I'm asking you to please vote no today. In addition to all the other arguments presented, it's important to realize that the potential impact this tower will have on the 13 children who live within the 900-foot buffer zone. They have no choice and absolutely no protection. And I would hate for them to bear the consequences of this decision, especially if it gets cellular coverage in the future. If this were being erected as a cellphone tower, it would never be allowed to go up. But the town can erect communications towers, which bypass all the safety and zoning restrictions. That means that the wetlands will be destroyed. A swath of trees will come down. And the fact that this area is zoned residential will be ignored. I can only imagine the effect that it will have on people's properties because this is not in our backyards, but actually in our front yards. And I'm not saying that I don't think it's important for our first responders to be able to communicate. I actually think that's tremendously important. And I'm horrified that the town hasn't been leasing space on Sorley's Tower, which is right next door. We need to keep our townspeople safe and give police and firefighters the tools that they need to do their jobs. The rental agreement is a more cost-effective, easier, safer option. And no new tower is necessary. Please pursue the rental option. Thank you so much. And vote no against this monstrosity.
Thank you. Ed, microphone two.
Yes, thank you. My name's Daniel Hurley. I live at 1170 Westford Street. You may recognize in the photo of the van, that's mine. I don't believe I signed any waivers for usage, but that's just a joke. Nobody needs to get upset. It's fine. My concern is the amount of hand-waviness in statements being made tonight. Lives are at risk, millions will be spent. And when asked for details, it's just kind of blown over and said, well, safety and millions. That concerns me because it seems like people are rushing to judgment and taking it as an obvious, this is what the town wants. And I'm not certain the town does. an obvious, this is what the town wants, and I'm not certain the town does. If you go by the bylaw of 900 feet, the answer to that would be, no, they don't want cell towers within 900 feet of them. They allow for safety communications because it is significantly important. As we could see by the presentation by Mr. Friedman and others, that they were fine with not having amendment restricting that. Why? It's safety only, and through other information provided, previous statements in the past, over the past two years, basically said, "Yeah, we're looking into that." So I feel like I'm getting lied to a bit, and that really upsets me, because if you are honest, you want it, you give me good reasons to do it, I would say yes. But as of now, I'm not gonna say yes to this, and I hope others see that for what it is. There is a technically acceptable place, which at a previous planning board meeting was stated as such, and the fact that the people just don't like the leasing agreement, which might run out in 10 years, maybe, kinda, well, we don't know, but we don't like that. Okay, let's go somewhere else. To me, that's just lazy, and I appreciate your time in listening to my comments.
Thank you. Also at microphone two.
Anjali Trehan, 1200 Westford Street. I fully support upgrading our public communication system, I think that is extremely important. And after reviewing all the facts carefully, I strongly believe that renting space on the existing tower at Sorley Farm is the best way to do so, and I'm opposed to building a second, yet another second tower at that location on Sorley Farm on Westford Street. Besides the fact that building a new tower so close to the existing one will be more expensive, it will take longer to go into effect, lower property values, and pose health hazards to residents. It will also undoubtedly spoil the beauty of our town, which we all take so much pride in. The second proposed tower is supposed to be 130 feet tall and will be impossible to cover up and will be an absolute eyesore, especially in the wintertime. I have friends in neighboring towns who love to drive through our town, particularly the Sorley Farm area, where they see cows grazing or turkeys and deer crossing 225. The town and Conservation Commission have spent $900,000 so far for a conservation restriction on some of the fields, and this tower will sit right next to 225, almost right across the street from these fields. The unspoiled rural landscape that we love and have taken so much pains to preserve all these years, and I have myself, with my family, lived in Carlisle for 32-plus years, this will all be overshadowed by this tall, ugly, very visible tower. We do not need this additional tower when we can easily achieve our goal, or we should be striving to achieve our goal, of providing townwide communications by renting space on the existing tower with much lesser expense and health risks to our residents. Thus, I urge you all to vote no on Article 5. Thank you.
At microphone four, please.
Melissa Suderman, 50th School Street. I actually have a question about the process. I have two school-aged children running around outside in the cafeteria, one, actually one's right here, and I'm wondering, if I have to go home and put them to bed, how am I supposed to vote?
What was the question? Unfortunately, the answer to that is, you can't if you're not here when the vote is called.
Okay. I find that really rare and really problematic, and maybe we can address that in another, at another time?
Well, and that's
I just wanted to bring it up, because I really gotta go.
Okay, well, okay, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to wrap this up really quickly.
Okay.
And I will tell you, your patience in our little technical things with Benfield is in part a step towards trying to experiment with ways of being able to address issues like that.
Okay. I just think that, you know, I think this happens probably not just tonight, but time after time, it could be an issue for the town, and if we really want an accurate read on what the town thinks, we should maybe really think of that.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Message taken, let's try to wrap it up. Mr. Friedman, your last comments.
I just wanted to comment with regard to the concerns about health hazards, aside from the fact that we could show information showing that there's no health hazard from this proposed tower. I would like to note that the antennas that we're proposing to put on this tower are exactly the same antennas that would be on the 1022 tower, and, but they will be 30 feet higher, and in fact, starting 20 feet higher off the ground, essentially the higher that antennas are, if one was concerned about safety, and the emissions from this tower are tens of thousands to hundreds of thousands lower than the FCC safety limits that already build in safety concerns. But again, it's the same antennas on both sites, so there's no, for those who are concerned about health from the antennas, being on 1022 versus 1110 wouldn't make a difference.
Sir, I believe you're gonna get the last word here before we vote.
I'll try, thank you. David Newman, Rutland Street. I've been with the fire department for 18 years now, and I've been an EMT for 30 years, and I'm one of the lieutenants on the fire department, which I know is a lot of Greek here, but that means that for me and the captain, the chief, that we're responsible for our firefighters and EMTs when they go into one of your homes. I wanted to first just thank you for all of your support over the last 18 years, I really appreciate it. And I wanted to say that I know a lot of you, I've been into a lot of your homes here, I recognize a lot of your faces here, and it's good to see you again, and I wanted to talk about why this is important, because when we go into one of your homes, in order for us to communicate with each other, and to communicate with our paramedics that come from Acton or Littleton, or Stowe, or Concord, we use portable radios to do that, and we use small radios like this one, this is a little pager, and it alerts me at 2:00 in the morning, like a couple nights ago, that I have to go to a call. And oftentimes in my house, I can't hear this pager, because of the radio system we have right now. And oftentimes, when we send our staff into buildings, like we did at the Highland Building, I can't communicate with them, and I can't tell you how scary it is to have our teams, and the chief saw this, in the basement of the Highland Building, and for me to be calling them and not to hear out, you know, where they are, what's going on. It is, it's a really scary situation, and not one that I really enjoy at all. So this is a lot for us, but it's also a lot for all of you. You know, when we're in your homes, we need to be able to get in touch with paramedics and tell them what help we need. We need to get in touch with dispatch and tell them that we need another engine, or hopefully not, but another town, to say that we need mutual aid, that we need help at one of your homes. So this is partially about us, but really partially about the community. And I talked to the captain a couple months ago, and I said, you know, "What happens if this doesn't pass a town meeting?" And he said, "It just has to pass, we, you know, this system won't work unless we have this tower." I think Mr. Friedman's already addressed, you know, the termination for convenience clause that's in the Sorley property, so I'm not gonna go into that, but we can't have a termination on a tower like this all of a sudden, we just can't move, pick up and move a tower all of a sudden, it's that, it's that important to our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to a vote. So, just reviewing where we are, this is going to be a two-thirds vote. I will try to do it by a show of your blue cards and see if I can call it. If I don't feel confident in what I can call visually, then we'll have to ask the tellers to come in and do a counted vote. The vote, oh, thank you for putting that up, it's on the motion as amended, so it does authorize the additional $225,000 for the, for the tower to be located at 1110 Westford Street, with the proviso that the telecommunications tower shall be used solely for public safety communications and not for any commercial purpose. Okay? Is everyone clear in what we're voting for? Okay. All those in favor, could I see your blue cards? And ask that you take a look around at Benfield and in the cafeteria, see what we have. Okay, and all those opposed, could I see your blue cards? I think I'd like to ask for a count on this, so if we could get the tellers, and those with kids, everyone, hang on till we get the tellers in here, those with kids. First of all, kids, you've been great, thank you. I appreciate, I hope you appreciate this lesson in civics. If you could just bear with us a few more minutes. And so, what we will do is that the tellers will divide up the room, and when I ask for you to hold up your hand, you're gonna hold your card up, and when the teller who is counting gives you this motion, then you can drop, but otherwise, keep them up high. Are we, are we ready to go? Okay, all those, all those in favor, please lift your cards. And please do keep them up until the teller signals you to drop your hand. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, you have the vote? Okay. Okay, tellers, are we done with this count for the moment? Okay, so you guys are good for now, and we'll get the no votes in just a minute. Tellers? Okay, I think we've got all the no votes.
He has our vote.
I've got it here, and then this is the Benfield one. So it would be, so 22, so it's 168. 168, okay. So, the count is 168 in favor, 52 against, that is more than a two-thirds, and the motion carries, and I so declare. With that, we have come to the end of the, of the meeting. There is the Complete Streets presentation, if anyone cares to stay. I thank everyone, I thank the people at Benfield, the people from Minuteman who helped us put this together, the additional help from our town clerks and assistant moderators and so forth. May I have a motion to dissolve the meeting? And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is dissolved. Thank you.